Seems like grabbing some technical details, I'll go ahead and take roll call. Alderman Lockmueller. Here. Alderman Sims.
Here.
Alderman O'Neil.
Here.
Alderman Fluffka.
Here.
Alderman Leahy.
Here.
Alderman Leahy, her mic is off.
Here.
Here. Very good. Alderman Dice.
Here.
And by my count, I think that's this. Oh, Alderman Evelyn.
Yes, I'm here.
Yes, thank you. Okay, we have, we have a forum. Next on the agenda is the approval or amendment of the agenda. Do we have any changes or any modifications? Alderman Fluffka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With regard to removing items or asking questions about certain items on the consent agenda, would you prefer to deal with that if the consent agenda comes up?
Yeah, the question was, when to make a request to remove something from the consent agenda? And the chair would prefer we just wait until we get to the consent agenda? So I think with that, we answered Alderman Leahy's question as well. Any other questions or modifications about the agenda? Any objection to approving the agenda by acclamation? Seeing none, it will be so approved. Just a note for those who may be watching this meeting. This is something that we have been wanting to do since the shutdown order went into effect. And tonight is the first time trying to do beyond the elected officials and the consultants and the city staff. We have been working very hard for this going back to last week. We've had two tests on this. And I say that only because if, for some reason, this doesn't work, I hope you understand that was a lack of trying on our part. But the goal is for the public to be able to see what we're seeing at the same time and have an opportunity to comment during the public comment section of the agenda, which we have not been able to do because of technology limitations with, in light of the shutdown order and our prohibition from having residents be at City Hall. So with that, let's give it a shot. Item four, citizens' comments. If you do care, if you do have any comments, if you would, whether you're Zooming or if you're calling in, if you could just state your name and address, and I would try to follow you for a shout out if I called. Hang on a second here. We've got four, one, two, three, four, and, I believe. Okay. If Bowman.
Can you hear me? This is.
I can hear you.
Okay, great. I'll go ahead and make comments. My name's Matt Bowman. I live at 2642 Dorothy Avenue. And I have some questions regarding the plans that were introduced or talked about in the last meeting in regard to the entrance to the apartment complex. My first question was about safety. Last meeting, we heard a lot of talk about safety, but it seemed to me most of the talk was regarding around vehicles and pedestrian safety. There was not a mention about safety of the houses on Dorothy Avenue, specifically ours that is going to be facing the street. So my question was, were safety studies done? And if so, what were the conclusions? What did they say about having nearly 200-plus cars and vehicles aimed at a house every single day? So I'm just curious, what were the results if any safety studies were done? I also had questions. I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I also had questions regarding about traffic studies. What traffic studies were done? I noticed that Alderman, I just hope I get this name, Lockmueller, was quoted in the post of saying, if the Mary Plan is approved, I'm sorry, if the Dorothy, the Mary Plan was approved, it would turn Mary into a drag strip. Now, I'm no traffic expert, but it would seem to me that if the Mary Plan was approved, it would increase traffic on many streets, including Dorothy, Florence, and Mary. So my question is, what is this quote based on? Is it based on facts and data from the traffic study? Or was it simply made up to justify supporting a poor position? Also, my question is environmental studies. What environmental studies were done? I'm not sure if you're aware, but when we get a heavy and quick rain, Dorothy Avenue turns into kind of a river, especially on the side facing the apartment complex. So now, they're going to add a large portion of the runoff from the apartment complex to this mix. So my question is, will it overwhelm the storm sewers? We have had flooding from storm sewers before. Would it cause flooding on our front yard? And how will cars handle coming in and out of the entrance when there's three to four inches of rushing water at the entrance? So, anyone listening to this will probably ask the question, why is Brentwood moving ahead with this Mary Plan possibly? It seems to me there's been no safety studies, there's been no traffic studies, and no environmental studies. The plan is more expensive, and by your own admission, has real safety concerns. So why would this plan be approved? Well, in my opinion, it's simple math. On our end of Dorothy, there are four houses. On Mary, there are 17 houses. It's a lot more houses, and there's a lot more voters. Isn't that what this is all about? Because it's obviously not about finding the best plan. It's not about finding the most economical plan, and it surely isn't about finding the safest plan. It appears to be about finding the most politically safe plan. So, after the last meeting, we did consult with the law firm to see if we had any legal rights to stop this from going on. And unfortunately, we were told that if Brentwood deems this plan to be safe, there's not much we can do. But there's one important caveat to that, and that is, if Brentwood deems this plan safe, which we all know it is not, and it is only a matter of time, it's only a when, not if, that a car will end up in our yard, wrapped around our tree, and in our house. And when that happens, you can guarantee we'll be taking action against all parties involved for approving a plan they know to be unsafe. Now, admittedly, I've said a lot, but mainly, I want to say, please understand, your decisions have real consequences for the people involved. And as my wife had said last time, please come down to 2642 Dorothy Avenue and take a look at what this plan would do. Look up the street and say, is this safe? Would I put my family here? And then don't just stand at our yard, walk up to the apartments and look down, and ask yourself, is this truly the best Brentwood could do? Because I say it's not. I love Brentwood, and we have some smart, smart people here. And it's come to my attention that there is a third plan, a plan that would eliminate all safety, traffic, and parking concerns, and is ADA compliant. So I guess my question is, why is this plan not being looked at? Because it would seem to me it would be the best plan for everyone involved. So if you could please take a look at a plan that seems to be the best option for all involved, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate you expressing your concerns. And as you probably remember, the public comment section of the meeting is not an opportunity to have a question-answer and on the dialogue with the Aldermen. However, if the Aldermen cared to address any of your questions at the close of public comment, they're free to do so, they'll have an opportunity. And secondly, I think some of your questions might be answered when we come to that item on the agenda. I see Karen Smith, I believe, has her hand raised.
Hi, this is Karen Smith on Harrison, and I just want to thank you for attempting to do this. I did attend some of the other meetings, and it was not as beneficial because you couldn't really see what you all were talking about, and if you shared something digitally, we couldn't see it. So I applaud the effort, and I also wanted to kind of experiment with what it was all about, to raise your hand and how that all worked, and it seems to work very well. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during this part of the, the public comment? I don't see any other hands, but there will be another opportunity later on in the meeting if you, if you think of something, or if somebody says something, or something is brought up and you care to address the board, you'll have another opportunity to do so. So, let's move on to item five, mayor and an Alderman report. I just have a quick report, and that is, I don't know how sure how quick it is, I'll try to make it quick, is the state of the economy in Brentwood, given the shutdown order. My concern when County Executive Sam Page issued the shutdown order was, what kind of effect was it going to have on our revenues? As we discussed at the last meeting, we know there is going to be a decrease in sales tax revenue. We know that the city gets approximately 70% to 75% of its revenue from sales tax. My concern, though, is not just for 2020, but 2021 and on, '22, '23, et cetera. Somebody said something interesting this morning, and that is, until we get a vaccine, we are going to be living with this virus, which causes some, creates some questions. Is this going to result in a different shopping pattern? You know, we all know the problem with online shopping and how that affects our brick-and-mortar businesses in Brentwood, those entities that have invested millions and millions of dollars to be here. And in a certain respect, they're undercut by online sales. In a way, to try and level the playing field is to have, in effect, what's called a use tax. Now, we've tried that before, it has failed, it takes the vote of the public to do that. However, I'm going to encourage the board to look seriously at putting that maybe back on the November ballot. The legislature down in Jefferson City failed to act last week and pass what's called the Wayfair legislation. That would be a legis, that would be, if it had been passed and if Governor Parsons had signed it, the effect of that would have been to force all out-of-state vendors to start collecting a sales for use tax. And Brentwood would then have an additional or a new stream of revenue that we're not getting presently. And so we're going to be talking about it some more over the next few months, we're going to be getting some more information, but I just wanted to bring it to the board's attention, that that is something that I think might be a route that we want to seriously consider. And with that, I have nothing else to say, and I'm going to turn it over to Alderman Evelyn.
I have a report for the Board of Brentwood Forests and the Rec. Board members.
Thank you. And Alderman Evelyn was muted for a second there, so what she said, though, is that there was a vote for the Brentwood Forest officers coming up, and she reported also on a Zoom meeting at Brentwood Forest. Alderman Leahy. Are you muted by chance? You are muted. You are muted, please.
Okay, there we go. Thank you. I have two things to bring to the Board of Alderman. First of all, there is an election on June 2nd, and I ask the voters, take the time to read the St. Louis County postcard that will be coming to you. The voting places in the city of Brentwood for this election have changed. Ward one, part of the ward will be voting at Hudson School, and part will be voting at the Brentwood Rec. Center. Ward two will be voting at the Richmond Heights Heights Center. Ward three will also be voting, part of the ward will be voting at the Richmond Heights, and part will be voting at the Brentwood Rec. Center. Ward four is also voting at the Brentwood Rec. Center. So take caution and read the notice that's sent to you so that you get to the right polling place. Second announcement, Your Honor, is we are holding a Election Day food drive at the three locations. Anyone wishing to come in and donate food, they will be distributed by the local service groups here in the Brentwood area so that we can try to get the food to the local families first as to need. So if you would like to participate, just bring up a can or two with you when you come vote. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you, Alderman Leahy.
Go back to me.
Thank you, Alderman Leahy. Next is Alderman Lockmueller.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next Public Works meeting in June will be June 11th, it's a Thursday at 6:00. I imagine it'll be virtually. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderman O'Neil.
The only big part is that the library is still closed, and everybody is wishing that they were open. The library bird would like to get things moving. That's it.
Thank you. Alderman Fluffka.
Thank you. The Public Safety Committee will meet on the fourth Wednesday of the month, which I think is the, I believe is the 27th of this month. We will meet at 5:30. We will likely have that meeting conducted through Zoom technology, and I'll get more information out about that as we get closer to the date of that meeting. The other thing I want to mention just real quick is, the Saturday before last, there was a 23-city effort at gathering food for the benefit of the St. Louis Food Bank in an effort to help those who have been affected by COVID-19 and the coronavirus. In that effort, there were almost 400,000 citizens of the 23 communities were asked to come and bring canned food items. Brentwood was one of those cities. There was 15 tons of food gathered at that drive in those various locations. Over a ton of that food, 2,400 pounds, I believe was the exact number, came from the city of Brentwood. And I did a little bit of math, and so I wanted to try and put this in perspective. And despite the fact that the city of Brentwood represents approximately 2% of that 400,000 population, we accounted for more than 8% of the contributions of food. To put another way, for every 1,000 people in this pool of 400,000, the average contribution was about 80 pounds of food per 1,000 people. In Brentwood, the average contribution was 300 pounds of food per 1,000, of people living in the city of Brentwood. It's one thing to call ourselves the city of warmth, it's another thing to go out and prove it with reactions like that and with effort like that. And so I wanted to applaud the city for their efforts at doing such a great job in contributing food to that very well-meaning food drive. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Fluffka. And it certainly drives home the point, why in a food drive, you want to give canned foods instead of ramen noodles? They weigh a lot more. They taste better, too. Alderman Sims.
No report.
Alderman Ty.
I have two things. At the last meeting, I don't think the police and fire were publicly thanked for the wonderful drive-through that they did about three weeks ago. Our next-door neighbors have a three-year-old and a five-year-old, and she said it was the most exciting thing that had happened during the pandemic. I stood outside for two and a half hours talking to neighbors. It was a great thing that they did, great camaraderie, and I hope the high schoolers are having a great time on their parade tonight. The other thing I'd like to mention is, we are going to have a ward meeting on June the 9th. We're hopeful that we could do it in person, but it may be via Zoom, so we will work to publicize that, and hopefully, we will have a good meeting like Ward Two did. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Ty. Alderman Leahy.
Just two things. One, I just, I really want to thank Shelley and Bola for helping make our first virtual ward meeting a great success, so we did some dry runs and went off relatively without a hitch. So it was a good experience, and just want to remind Ward Two residents that are on the line that our polling place for the June 2 election is going to be at the Richmond Heights Heights. That's not normal. Normally, we have it at City Hall, so just wanted to make sure everybody's aware that we will be moving to a different place. I believe that'll be temporary just for the June, June election, hopefully back to normal after that. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Leahy. Next on the agenda is item six, City Administrative Report. We have five items. The first is a report from Kerber Eck and Breckel LP, Independent Review of Expenditures of, excuse me, proceeds of the 2018 Certificate of Participation. Bola, who is presenting on this? You're muted.
Courtney Cannon. She's on the phone line.
Okay, Courtney, the floor is yours.
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you. Thank you.
Fabulous. Good evening. My name is Courtney Cannon, and I'm a Senior Accountant with Kerber Eck and Breckel, joining to present a report on the agreed-upon procedures related to the expenditures of the 2018 and 2019 Certificate of Participation proceeds for the period from January 1, 2020 through March 31, 2020. We would like to note that agreed-upon procedures do not constitute an audit, an examination, or a review, and accordingly, we do not express an opinion or conclusion on the expenditures of the Certificate of Participation proceeds. The procedures performed were agreed to by the Board of Alderman and the Mayor of the City of Brentwood, and the sufficiency of those procedures is solely the responsibility of the Board and the Mayor, and we make no representation regarding the sufficiency of the procedures. Regarding the 2018 Series Certificates of Participation, the procedures and associated findings for the 2018 COPs, Request Number 37 through 45, which include 36 invoices totaling $927,050.28, are as follows. First, signed contracts were reviewed for all invoices with the exception of purchases made from sole-source providers, purchases made on the open market with a value of less than $2,000, purchases requiring a quick turnaround as allowed under Purchasing Code Section 135.120, selection of professional services, and purchases from subcontractors covered under previously approved contracts with the city of Brentwood. No exceptions noted. Second, we examined invoices to determine if city or Brentwood policy and internal controls were followed, comparing all 36 invoices to the city of Brentwood policies and internal control procedures. No exceptions noted. Finally, we examined invoices for proper payments allowed by the official statement of the Certificate of Participation, comparing all 36 invoices to the official statement of the Certificate of Participation for allowability. No exceptions noted. Regarding the Series 2019 Certificates of Participation, no written requests for disbursement of project costs were submitted during the period from January 1, 2020 through March 31, 2020, from the Series 2019 Project Fund account. Accordingly, no procedures were performed for the Series 2019 COP for this period. I am available for questions if anyone had anything they would like to ask.
Great, thank you, Courtney. Let's see if we have any questions. That's good news, no exceptions. For those who are listening, that means there were no problems, and we complied with all the requirements in spending the certificates of participation. Thank you very much, Courtney.
Thank you so much.
Next on the agenda is the Brentwood Bound update, and we do have a number of items on this, just to name a few. We're going to start out with, I believe, Craig with Navigator with Navigate is going to give us a Brentwood Bound update, and we're going to have a Vanmark Way update by TWM, Deer Creek Greenway Connector, 30% Design update by Plan Design Studio, and a Phase Two Master Park Plan presentation also by PDF, just to name a few. So with that, Craig, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? All right, Craig with Navigate, I'll be providing the Brentwood Bound update. Two quick updates. As I reported back on April 6, on May 27, we'll be having a meeting with the residents to the west of Norm West Park to discuss the Norm West traffic changes. A mailer is, if it has not been received, it will be received shortly, and we will be meeting with those residents again May 27, which is next Wednesday. Next, on June 3, we've got an open house. There's a mailer going out to all residents for this. This would be a Zoom webinar open house where we will provide an open update for all of Brentwood Bound, to all the residents in the city. So excited for that. Getting into the typical update in regards to expenditures and construction costs, total spends since the last Board of Alderman meeting was $9,140. This was DAB tree to remove a few trees within the Brentwood Bound area. Next is soft costs. Total spend since the last Board of Alderman meeting is $67,391.99. This was for legal fees and property surveys. Next is property acquisitions. Total spend since the last Board of Alderman meeting is $4,882.04. This was for property relocation expenses. And lastly, the committed contingency to date was updated based on property acquisition expenses. That committed contingency is $1,545,743. I'll answer any questions before I kick off the next design team, if anyone has any questions.
Any questions for Craig about the update so far? Okay, seeing none, Craig? Now, just from people who are participating, Craig, you're going to have, at this point, you're going to have a slide presentation that hopefully the participants will also be able to view.
Correct.
Great, thank you.
So before I turn it over to TWM to provide the Vanmark update, that's in the 100% drawings, I just wanted to high-level tell you all why tonight is so exciting. First off, we are bringing another demo bid package to the board. This will remove the remaining Phase 1 flood mitigation buildings. The bids came in $800,000 under budget, so that's another big win for Brentwood Bound. With your hopeful approval tonight, we will commence abatement and demo in the next coming weeks. Next is the MSD agreement. I looked at my notes earlier today, and I saw I first called MSD on March 9 of 2018, which means it was over two years ago when the partnership discussion first started. Tonight, after countless hours and meetings from staff and consultants, we bring you the MSD agreement for your final approval. This MSD agreement benefits Brentwood Bound by over $1.6 million between grants and property acquisition contributions, which is another big win for Brentwood Bound. I especially want to thank Jacobs because they have worked tirelessly over the past couple of weeks to help make this get approved by MSD. So thank you all for that. Third, the design team. First, TWM, talking about Vanmark. Next, Plan Design Studio and Jacobs, talking about Deer Creek Greenway Connector. These are big milestones. This is the first time you all and the residents will see the 30% drawing set for the Deer Creek Greenway Connector. We are also presenting new updated drone renderings that have been updated to reflect the Brentwood Bound when the project's done. So you will be able to see in a very real form what this amazing park and what these amazing improvements that you all approved a while ago and how it's slowly coming to fruition. So this is all very exciting. I hope you all get excited when you see these renderings because it's taken a lot of work to get to this point. So with that, if it's okay with you, Mayor, if we could turn it over to Heather with TWM, she'll provide the Vanmark Way update.
Sure, thank you, Craig. Heather?
All right, there we go. Thanks for the chance to talk about Brentwood Bound, the Vanmark Way update. I'll run through the, where we're at now, and some other auxiliary engineering that we had done to check that we had the best design. So, we've moved forward with the Vanmark Way revision based on a motion made by the Board to connect Vanmark Way by crossing Rogers Parkway. We were also asked to remove the area to the north of this crossing from the project scope and keep the existing playgrounds, and to take a look at moving that connection further south. First, I'll talk about where the design is today. As you can see, the existing playground remains. This is a rendering of a conceptual design that we shared with the city of Brentwood before moving forward into design. So the existing playground remains per the Board's direction. We've set the construction limits. This is the impact where the dirt is turned, basically, how far out does that go? We were balancing several things here. Some of our goals were to eliminate impacts to the playground, of course, and then minimize impacts to the apartment complex and the Dorothy residents. And we've been able to accomplish that by pushing the road as far north as possible to reduce. to reduce headlights in the residents' houses while not affecting the playgrounds. Also, we've used some variable curb heights along the edges to not affect existing brick columns in the apartment complex and to try to help with some of those drainage issues. We've set the paving limits, and those have been based on the existing and proposed slopes of the road. And there's not a big impact on the apartment complex overall. You can see how far back it goes to that first retaining wall on the north side. Dorothy Avenue resurfacing limits have been reduced to line up with the Van Mark Way work. Concrete islands. We've put three inch mountable curbs into the design. You can see those in like the darker color there in the center of Van Mark Way. We've introduced into the design those items for traffic calming measures. This makes the road feel a little bit narrower when you're approaching Dorothy and tends to have people slow down. And then we've also added the traffic channelizing islands there at Dorothy to direct traffic leading the complex to go south onto Dorothy. You can see too, the trail crossing striping. We've added bold, large block striping at the trail crossing to make it stand out to drivers. We've checked, we've coordinated with the fire chief and made sure that Brentwood fire trucks and auxiliary fire trucks that may be responding to any fires in the apartment complex will have access. They'll be able to go over the three inch mountable curbs that we have designed. And we've also checked that moving trucks and delivery trucks can navigate those three inch mountable curbs. We've minimized grades. We're going to be lowering existing Van Mark Way by about a foot, and that helps us to get slopes that tie in and keep the max grade at 12% while maintaining those smaller construction limits. We also turned in 100% draft plans, 100% design draft plans to MoDOT on April 10th. They are reviewing those now with the goal of getting us the comments back by May 31st, and then we will start revising based on their comments, and we will show them this new Van Mark Way design. Everything will get turned into MoDOT, signed and sealed, final plans July 10th. I also wanted to talk about a, our efforts in looking at moving the connection further south. There was a conceptual design that was turned into the City of Brentwood, and so we modeled that in CAD. And you can see here in pink, I know it's a little hard to see, but that, that's about 100 feet south of where the connection is today for Van Mark Way. And we listed the impacts here in the order that, that we found on the left side. So the roadway slope of Van Mark Way where, where it was set there with the trail meeting ADA standards, the roadway slope would be 18.5%, and that does not meet ASHTO. And the reason ASHTO has that standard is because cars would bottom out at that percent slope. We also checked with the chief about fire truck access, and we ran turning models, and the fire trucks would not be able to make that turn to the south, so down on your screen. And the fire chief did not like that. He would not allow the access to be built that way because he needed access there to the south. Site distance was also an issue as drawn, it's a 20 degree skew. That's the maximum that St. Louis County would allow. It introduces site distance concerns, it's something that we noted in our analysis. The trail and the trail crossing, it has to meet ADA standards. I've shown what's called a cross section here in the bottom of this slide that shows how that trail, it's set at the elevation it needs to be to meet ADA standards, and then also you'll see that it's a cross slope. So 1% is where we've set it for constructability, 2% max is what the contractor gets. If we set it at 2%, it makes it very difficult for the contractor to, to meet that maximum slope, so we set it at 1%. So this just kind of gives you an idea of what kind of grades we're working with in that area in order to make the trail ADA, ADA compliance. We also noticed there are quite a bit more utility impacts here by using this alignment to the south. So for those reasons, we did not pursue the southern alignment, so Van Mark Way. And with that, I guess I'll, I can take any questions.
Thank you, Heather. Anybody on the board have any questions for Heather? Alderman Lockmeier, I see your hand.
Heather, getting back to that first slide, as cars are leaving the apartment complex and approaching the path, is there any way to put in maybe some rumble stripping so the, the speed of the car is slowing down somewhat before it hits that pathway and before it gets to the intersection of Dorothy to kind of meet the concern of the homeowner that called in earlier?
Sorry, someone's doing some vacuuming. We, I could look at doing some, some rumble strips there. Sometimes that tends to be loud at nighttime. It can be an annoyance for the neighborhood, but it's something we can take a look at if that's what. We could either look at rumble stripes or rumble strips, like you said, or we could look at speed bumps, speed tables, if that's something that you would value putting in there.
Well, I'm just thinking is, you know, people are leaving that apartment complex, they're picking up a little bit of rate of speed because of the slope, and it would cause them to almost come to a stop before that path and also slow down their descent as they hit Dorothy.
Yeah, yeah, it's something we could take a look, see. Yeah.
Did you?
Absolutely.
Alderman O'Neill.
Yes, a question for Heather. Is it possible to put a stop sign in front of the trail? So cars coming down the slope would have to come to a stop before they cross the trail?
That's something we can look into as well. It's generally not obeyed if you set it up that far away from the intersection. I'll just say it's, it's an enforcement issue oftentimes, although the sign could be placed there, people tend to pull up to the intersection before they come to a stop.
I understand that, but as someone who might be riding a bicycle down that trail, the thought of a car coming down there and not even pausing before they cross the trail is a bit alarming.
Sure, it's a, it's a, a good point. We can take a look and see what sort of standards are in, are allowed per the manual of uniform traffic control devices. We can take a look and see what's allowed.
Okay.
Alderman O'Neill, I, I will say, this isn't my thing, yeah, I would just repeat to you what I was told, and that was one of the problems with taking the road from Van Mark Way out to Dorothy. That was one of the things that PDS was, or TWM, I'm sorry, was trying to avoid because of that, it's a safety issue. They were trying to minimize the number of points where the, a road would cross the trail, and that's why the original plan had it going north and then on over. And so, you know, as, as I've been told for every action, there's an equal and opposite reaction, and, and that is kind of the truth here. You know, they, in order to alleviate the, the concerns of going north, the problem is that you're taking a road across the trail where there was not one to begin with. Heather, I don't know if you were, if you're able to hear the public comment, but one of the residents, Matt Bowman, had asked about safety studies, traffic studies, or environmental studies. Can you speak to that and whether any of that was done, and if so, what the results were, if there are such a thing? I, I have no idea.
Traffic study has not been performed. A, a safety study per se has not been performed, but we've added as many safety countermeasures as possible, including the large block striping, the traffic calming measures, the alignment where the, where the road's going in. We integrated all that into the design to the extent possible. As far as the environmental studies, it sounded like a lot of his concerns were centered on the drainage. We are working on that right now. We're coordinating with MSD and with Brentwood Bounds. All those players come into how the drainage system works to the south. All that, all that water is running south. We are sizing the pipes accordingly to keep what's called the spread of the water, the stormwater off of Dorothy, to keep it to the standards that MSD will allow. So when this is built, it shouldn't be flooding his yard. The water should, the stormwater should all be captured per MSD standards.
Okay, and I do note, I remember you saying that the road would move as far north as possible without impacting the playground, but the benefit of moving it far north is that it minimizes, if not outright, eliminates any headlights going into the, that resident's home when the car is stopped.
Yeah, we've done our best to make sure those residents are, the, sorry, the headlights will be aimed more at the fence, that fence line, that fence corner that's on that property. So yeah, we, we feel good about where the, the alignment is for that.
Thank you, thank you, Heather. Are there any other questions for Heather on the Van Mark Way update? Alderman Lady, if you would unmute?
Heather, in the three inch high divider that you're putting in, how does that affect a car pulling a U-Haul trailer?
It should still be mountable. It should still be, it'll be a bump, they'll feel it, but it should be, because a fire truck, a delivery truck, a moving truck, they can all go over that. A trailer should be able to go over the curb as well.
You're, I love what you're telling me, but I get the feeling that nobody seriously looked at what that may be. Can somebody do that before we get too far along?
I can take a look and see what, uh, cars are available on our model to see if there's a, a U-Haul trailer type. Yeah.
Because I would hate to have something bottom out at that thing and just tear everybody up. Thank you.
Thank you, Alderman Lady. Anyone else have any questions? Okay, Heather, thank you very much. We will move on to the next portion, and that is the Deer Creek Greenway. That is going to be Andy, is that right?
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'm going to share my screen here. Can everybody see that?
Yeah.
Oh, great. I'm Andy Frankie with Plan Design Studio. Jeff Nilges is here with me as well, and we're the landscape architects for the flood mitigation projects and the GRG Greenway. We're going to give you an overview tonight of our 30% design. We're also going to talk about the flood mitigation Phase Two Parks Master Plan. We're also going to answer some questions that the Board of Aldermen has asked us. And finally, we're going to conclude with a, a little bit of discussion about the construction activities on Mary Avenue. Before I get started, I just wanted to let everybody know that what we're presenting tonight is informational. There's no action from the Board required on anything, so sit back, relax, and enjoy the show. We'll start with the GRG Connector. Again, as I said, this is just informational only. All the projects we're going to show on the connector are funded projects. We completed our 30% plans, and we're going to give you a quick overview of those, including the renderings. And then we're going to talk a little bit about the Union Pacific Railroad Crossing that's planned at Brentwood Boulevard, and the Brazil-Russell Brentwood Boulevard intersection. We'll wrap up with some schedule items. Just as an overview, this is an updated rendering that shows overhead the entire project area. Manchester Road is at the top of the sheet, north is up. On the left-hand side is Brentwood Boulevard. On the right-hand side is Hanley Road, and Union Pacific's to the south. You can see By State down there in the left-hand corner. So the red box is indicating essentially the area we're going to talk about right now. This is kind of a key map, so what we're going to give you guys is a snapshot of the landscape plans. We just pulled those drawings out of the set, and they're kind of numbered sequentially. As we go through these drawings, there'll be a key map in the bottom right-hand corner of the sheet, so you can kind of follow that around. I'll try and point that out. Before I do that, though, at the top of the sheet, we also inserted from Heather's plan set, the landscape plans for the south part of the tunnel. She was kind enough to give those to us, and that's the first sheet that I'm showing right now. This is the south underpass exit as you would exit the tunnel. You'll notice that the path actually splits in half. We have a landscape meeting in the middle, and then the trail continues south. It's a lot of landscape material on those steep slopes. The next sheet, and again, I'll point out, there's a key plan in the bottom right-hand corner of the sheet, so you can kind of follow along as we're moving down the sheets. This next sheet shows the trail continuing south. You'll notice on the left-hand side of the sheet, 8702 Manchester Road, we're doing a little bit of reconstruction of the parking lot there. As we continue south, you'll notice the Phase One Trail that's coming out there as well. And then as we continue south, you can essentially see the four bay of the lake and our first meditation lawn. This is an overview of the entire lake area, kind of a little bit larger scale. We were coming in from the south, you can see that Phase One Trail Meditation Lawn, Four Bay, and then the main Mary Avenue Storage Basin. You'll also notice the amphitheater, another two meditation lawns that continue around the south as the main pathway loops around. You'll also see Executive Walk and its connection there as well. And at the bottom left, you can see the soccer field, and you can also see the existing MSD diversion structure that's going to remain in place. I will show these in the rendering and try and point some of these items out as well. Continuing south, you can also see the reconfigured Executive Walk parking lot and the connection that we're going to provide from that property to the main trail as well. This is a plan out of the actual Phase One plant, plan set that shows the parking lot for executive walks that we're reconfiguring, and you can see the exit and entrance right off of Executive Walk onto Brazil in that location. This is a sheet that's kind of the fourth quadrant of the lake. You'll notice, you can see the Four Bay, Mary Avenue Storage Basin, the Boardwalk, the Weir, and then the Horseshoe Shore that's kind of coming through there as well, and our last meditation garden. This is a view of the soccer field, this path continues south. You'll notice the MSD diversion structure, meditation lawn, and the amphitheater. This is the section where the, the path continues south, and then it starts to bear to the west. You'll also notice the future pavilion and event lawn and future dog park. Those are just grass areas right now in this plane. As the trail continues west, you'll notice that we come across, come to the permeable parking lot, it has 69 spaces, and then you'll notice the Brazil Avenue connection that connects up into them. This is the, where the trail then makes its turn south to start moving towards the metro, metro building. What we've created here is the Russell Avenue Brentwood Boulevard-Brazil Avenue intersection. What we've tried to do is actually bring this intersection to as close as a full four-way intersection as we possibly could. We'll look at this intersection in a little bit more detail as we get farther through the presentation, but essentially, one of the key components is that MoDOT and Union Pacific Railroad are working together to signalize and put traffic signals related to the railroad crossing in at this intersection. You'll also notice that as the trail loops south, it will be protected by Union Pacific Trail Drop Arms too, as well. Can you guys see my hand floating around on that? That's in that area as well. Then the trail will continue south. One of the things that's important to note here is the City of Brentwood is trying to work with St. Louis County highways to get this intersection signaledized, because what we're really trying to do is actually be able to create a pedestrian link so pedestrians can walk across. And one day in the future, we can actually link up Brentwood Park to this new Norm West Park area. This is the next plan set continuing down, where you can see the trail is moving along the reconfigured metro lot. We have a retaining wall on one side of that, and then it'll eventually cross a realigned metro south entrance and continue looping down, where it'll eventually cross an extension of the Deer Creek Bridge as it crosses over Deer Creek as well. One of the other things is this key inset where we come down off the, off that bridge, and then we loop in and make the connection to the existing Deer Creek Greenway. The next image is aerial drone shot, if you were kind of hovering right over maybe the apartment building and the parking lot of Ace Hardware, you can kind of see Arby's there in the foreground. So this is the before. You can also see the existing Mary Avenue in that, that shot. This is the after, and again, these are all projects, this is all part of our project that is funded. You can see that we exit the tunnel on the south side of Manchester Road, and we are on our trail system as it loops through. This is the Phase One Trail as it continues on through the flood mitigation Phase One area. Mary Avenue Storage Basin, this is the amphitheater area. Also notice that there's perimeter paths in the boardwalk that go around that, that lake or pond feature. Pathway continues south, this is that MSD diversion structure, and it continues south. This is the soccer field that we reconstructed. This is the soccer field that we reconstructed, and the future dog park is in this area. This is kind of reverse angle drone shot where we're kind of looking at Brentwood materials right now. This is Brentwood Boulevard. If you kind of were going north, Union Pacific Railroad right here. This is the after shot, so you can kind of see this new Russell Brazil intersection in this location. The Brazil Extension would curve in this way, your parking lot, and then this is our trail that continues north. Again, this is the future event lawn and building, future dog park, soccer field, lake. This is the redevelopment area in the background. And this will be the playground and water feature someday in the future, and then the trail would continue south. The next thing I wanted to talk quickly about is what we're actually doing at that intersection, and I apologize. I had to switch the orientation of the map, so north is actually to the left. So what we're really looking at is Bonaventure Coffee, Brentwood Materials, Union Pacific Railroad, and then the entrance to Metro or By State right here, and then this is Russell Avenue here. So this is the existing condition. This is also our demo plan, so one of the things that you don't know, actually flip back, is Brentwood Materials has two entrances in this location. Bonaventure has two entrances as well. So what we're proposing to do at this intersection, we'll have four lanes southbound, three through and one left. If you're northbound on Brentwood Boulevard, you'll have three lanes, two through, and one left. You can see Brazil Extension will have two outbound and one inbound as well. One of the things that we're doing with this plan is we have a 10-foot-wide concrete median where the crossing arms will be located for the railroad crossing in Brentwood Boulevard. We had to put that in because the Union Pacific Railroad has a rule that the crossing arms can't be any longer than 24 feet in case somebody knocks one of them down. That's the maximum length that the guy can come and put it back up. If they get any bigger than that, it's really difficult and it takes a lot of time to repair. Again, as we mentioned, as I mentioned, we're gonna try and make pedestrian connection, and we're working diligently with St. Louis County highways. And I do mean diligently to get a signal there. We'll hopefully come back and report some good news on that. One of the other things I wanted to point out is we are impacting Bonaventure Coffee, because we have to actually kind of splay this road out a little bit. We have to remove their skewed entrance here and kind of straighten it up, because it's just entirely too close to that new intersection there. So that's a little bit of a concern, and one of the other things we wanted to present quickly was how we were gonna deal with that in construction. I don't want to blabber these, but just suffice it to say that we are, we have the ability to work with them, and we'll be able to keep those guys open through construction. We think we can actually keep both of their sides of their building open during construction, because they have this really interesting kind of counter, counterclockwise, clockwise circulation going. It's actually a really smart little plan. Works real well for them, and hopefully it'll work better for them in the future. But we would phase this construction so that you can have both sides of that building open the majority of the time through there. There might be one period where we actually have to pinch one off, but honestly, we'll work really close with the contractor, because I think we might be able to do that in the evening or on a weekend where it doesn't impact their operations, so I'm pretty sure that we can make that happen. So regarding schedule and budget, we started this in December of last year, and we're gonna complete this in the spring of '21. We submitted our 30% plans on the 23rd of April. 60% design is due July 27th, so that's getting really big in the window really fast for us. And we need to do that because GRG has to have that in prior to August, so that they can get that into the budgeting process in August. We're anticipating bidding in spring of '21. Construction will start in summer of '21 and conclude in the fall of '22. And I think this is probably the best news, that design is within budget, so we're in good shape with that part of the project. Before we move to the flood mitigation Phase Two master plan, do we have any questions?
Tell you what, can we get back so I can see the rest of the board, so I can see if anybody has any questions? How's that? Okay, thank you. Okay, Alderman O'Neil.
I have a design question about the paths. It looks as though it's a one-way path through Brentwood, along the creek. But my impression originally was there would be a loop around the lake. And is there any way to extend the trail past that MSD building along the creek? So there is a straight path along the creek and a loop around the lake?
Let me jump back a couple of slides, and I'll share my screen again. This might be maybe the best image to address it, I think. If not, I'll go to a larger image. So you want the Phase One Trail to loop back into this one?
Yes, from the existing MSD diversion structure.
That's right here.
Yes, if that concrete path or whatever is there could be extended along the creek, it could pick up the trail further east.
I think one of the issues with that is the fact that we actually have to cross over this kind of unnamed tributary through there. So what we're trying to do is just have the loop system loop this way, and then you come up around and go that way. We weren't able to actually run the trail in this location through here.
So it would require a bridge through there, is what you're saying?
I think it probably would. Let me. So really, what you want to do is this?
Yes.
Can you see that? Yes, it would require a bridge at this location for sure. I think the other issue is the functional requirements of the Mary Avenue Basin and the way that it works from a flood capacity standpoint. And I'm not sure that we really want to put any structures in this area, because again, this thing's gonna kind of flood this way, both ways. We are trying to locate as much of the trail on the backside of that to prevent that sort of activity. It's a great question, but Jeff, unless you have any other thoughts on that, I think that's really the approach we were taking on that. Wish we could do it, though. Sure, you're welcome.
Does anyone else have any questions? Alderman Lockmiller, you have your hand?
Yes. In this MSD agreement we're going to approve later on, they're requiring access to their facilities via Mary Avenue. Which, I guess they're going to need some other route to be able to access those facilities. And they've got specs for that. Is that taken into account in this design?
It is. I'll show you how. Actually, they're gonna come in this way, and they're actually gonna use the path in this location, and then come all the way through here. So we're actually designing that Phase One Trail to serve as a maintenance path for those guys, because they want access to the manholes along the horseshoe sewer as well. So yeah, that's gonna be a thick, we're gonna thicken up all this, all this concrete trail in that location.
Okay, great. Thank you, Andy.
Alderman Waggy.
Andy, two questions. So when you say these things are funded, can you refresh my memory on the amphitheater, the boardwalk, and the soccer field? What is the source of that funding? And maybe that's a Bola question or a Craig question, that where that funding is coming from. And the reason I ask is when we had the workshop and we talked about the content in Norman West, the only agreement that we had was the Phase One path out to Hanley through the flood area.
Oh, there you go. The improvements to soccer field, the lake improvements, all that were part of the original phased Norman West Park. So those were not part of the unfunded features, like the event lawn, the dog park and that. All the features that Andy just went through, if you go back to the original June work session, are, were all in there on the slide that said, these are what's in the project. And then there was another slide that said, these are what are not. So these improvements on Norman West Park are in the budget. They're part of that 79.625 million. They are not tapping into any grants or partnership amounts or any money like that. It's part of the original Norman West Park budget for the Deer Creek Greenway Connector.
Okay. And then what about the future growth for the playground, right? We've talked, I know that was in the future plan that would have to be approved coming back through us. Where would that go if we decide to put a playground in?
I think if you show me that rendering, it shows the best from Brentwood Materials looking north.
That'd be in this location right here. Where it says future playground water play feature.
Oh.
Right there. Yeah, right there.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, thank you.
Future funded projects there. You see the future playground water play, and to the right of the event lawn building, and then to the right of that is the dog park.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Frank, I'm gonna go back to the earlier question that Mr. Lockmiller asked. You're beefing up the trailway so that MSD can come in off Brentwood Boulevard into this area to get to their different manhole sewers along the way.
That's correct.
Is all of that cost in the original budgeting that we were going to be putting in that thick of concrete and wide enough to handle their vehicles?
Yes, yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
So much easier to just walk up and talk to you. Beyond MSD, we always knew we needed to provide maintenance for Eric, the Parks Director and his crews. So then there's a discussion later about having some potential food trucks in the area. So we always knew that we needed to have thicker pavement underneath the sidewalks, even beyond MSD, and that's why it was always a mid-design in the budget.
So we haven't surprised anybody. That's a good thing.
Yes.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, Alderman O'Neil.
Thank you. I'm going back to Brandon's first question. I'm a little confused. I had thought the amphitheater was an if, not a given, that it was sort of the second phase while the dog park was a given. So it looks as though these two have been reversed, or I misunderstood? Yeah.
I think Craig will handle that for you.
Sure. The, the lake improvements, they were always part of the funded part of the project. When you say funded, it included the 2018 and 2019 COPs were always part of the project. And those lake improvements included the boardwalk, which is that wood walkway across the lake, and in addition, the amphitheater. So those have always been as part of the funded part of the project, the base part of the project. The dog park was one of the unfunded projects.
So we have no dog park? What, as construction goes on and the temporary dog park there is removed, Brentwood has no dog park except at Hanley then, is?
Correct. Correct.
Okay.
I can't tell you that as part of our flood mitigation package, we're gonna have the contractor salvage the fencing and as much of that stone as possible in the existing dog park. Eric and I walked that about two weeks ago to kind of strategize on that. So the city will have all those materials, so if you all decide to fund the dog park, it will be a lot less expensive than we originally said it would cost to have that dog park relocated from where it currently is down to the location that Andy just presented. So we are, like I said, we're gonna save what you've got and try to use as much as we can for these costs.
Does Clayton have any claim on any of that fencing?
Looks like Eric's on the webinar. It's my understanding that Eric knows the timeframes when the dog park is gonna be removed, and I believe, it looks like he just went off the, go ahead, Eric.
Yeah, so the fence was part of the project, and so Clayton basically gifted the fence to us. So that's our fence to do whatever we want with whenever we're done with the partnership.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you. And Alderman O'Neil, I would simply say, the, like Craig said, the the PowerPoint presentation that was shown to the board last summer, summer of 2019, it lays out everything that is included in the budget for what's not included. All those extras, the water feature, the playground equipment, the building down by the park slot. And, you know, if you have any questions, I would encourage you to pull that back up, and you'll see, it's really laid out very well, very nicely. I looked at it over the weekend just so I could refresh my memory as to what was included and what's still not funded. But if you need access to that, let us know, and we will point you in the correct direction so that you can take a look at this slide. Alderman Ty, I think you had your hand up?
Yes. Some of the questions tonight have brought back, brought back to my normal questions about the budget. And I know the world has totally upended, but I'm wondering if we could get the topic of the budget of Brentwood Bound on the Ways and Means Committee in the coming months. I totally appreciate that there's a lot of other stuff that the city has been dealing with, but this project marches along. And I would like to request that the Ways and Means Committee have a little more oversight of this.
Well, thank you, and I'm sitting right next to the chair of that committee, so I'm sure all the women's fans will be more than happy to talk to you about that. Anybody else have any questions for Andy on the 30% design drawings by Norman West Park? Okay, I seen on Andy, if you want to continue then.
Jump to the next section. So this next map you've seen before, we're gonna be talking about the Phase Two Parks and Trails Master Plan, which is essentially where this red box is. That's kind of in the northeast corner of the project, kind of around Breckridge Industrial Drive and, and they wrote Frederick Roofing Property essentially. So this is a complicated little site as well. MSD has a lot of requirements for this area. We'll talk about that. There are some flood mitigation requirements for the area. There's some existing conditions that we need to think about, and then we actually have to add over the top of that the Parks and Trail requirements for the area as well. This image is just kind of an overview image of what we're dealing with. So I'll start at the top of the legend. We have two storage basins we're gonna accommodate in this area. They're shown as one, one's right here, and one is right here. The second thing to keep in mind is item two is a 54-inch sewer that MSD owns, and it kind of runs as this dash line all the way through the project. So right away, we've got a problem, because we've got a storage basin located over the top of an MSD pipe, which is not really a good way to make friends with MSD, so we have to fix that, right that wrong right away. And what we're proposing to do is construct a 54-inch sewer right above that and then connect into a 72-inch sewer that will eventually kind of tie into the 54-inch. So there's a lot of kind of tricky MSD work around here. And I apologize, I should have probably oriented everybody to this map. Manchester Road is to the north. This is Hanley Road. This is the famed Frederick Roofing Trailer that has been out there. Everybody's seen that as well. One of the other components that we need to consider, eventually MSD is gonna connect that line up across Manchester Road, so they need some space for a bore pit as well. Existing condition-wise, there's a cell tower down here that needs access. MSD has MSD has their tunnel facility here. I call it the bottle cap. It looks like kind of an upside down soda bottle cap right there. One of the other things that MSD needs is they need access to that tunnel off Breckridge Industrial Drive in as straight a possible manner as we can give them. And then we need to connect up to our Deer Creek Phase One Trail in this location. So that's kind of what we're dealing with as we started to develop the master plan. This is what we ended up with. And we have the two basins as we talked about. We're going to have a twelve foot wide path that comes through, connects up to the shared use path that's planned on the south side of Manchester Road. It'll come through this area, loop around the north side of MSD's facilities. And then it'll loop down along the bank or this area right here and go actually go underneath Breckridge Industrial Bridge, the new bridge that we're building as well. We'll have a kind of a side path that will get up to that area as well. As we were developing this master plan, MSD looked at it, said, we got to change a few things because we need access to our area right in this location and it has to be as straight as possible. So as we move this master plan into final design, we're going to end up having to straighten that access route in there as well. And we will also need that that trail will eventually serve as access for the cell tower in that location. Time for some more renderings. This is a before shot. If we were in a drone looking north, this is the BMW dealership. That's actually kind of a cool looking building. Never realized that. And you can see MSD's tunnel facility right here. This is a Joy Luck Cafe Frederick Roofing right here. So this is what this project will look like when it's implemented. You can see the the new Breckridge Industrial Bridge, the trail system that will go actually under that bridge and connect to the Phase One Trail. And then our trail will actually come up in this location as well. And then we'll have a loop that comes in and goes all the way up to the south side of Manchester Road. So that that's the master plan for the Phase Two Parks and Trails component. And I think the next step with this is this is an unfunded project. We'll revisit this project and and other unfunded projects in the future to determine if the city wants to fund additional design and construction parts of this. And again, no, no actions required of the board tonight. So this is just informational.
Great, thank you, Andy. And with that, we will entertain any questions by the board for for Andy relative to the Phase Two Master Park Plan Presentation. Alderman Leahy.
Andy, if you can go back to your slide. We have later in the agenda an easement issue. Can you show us where that easement issue is coming in and how it plays into what we're doing, proposing here on your land usage?
This one or this one?
The one with, I think it's IMO or property at eighty twenty. It's later in our agenda that we have to get the fifteen thousand dollar easement in there. Can you show us where that is being put into place?
I know where that is. I'm sorry.
I apologize, Jim. I apologize. Okay, I apologize.
Okay. Do we have any other questions for Andy about the the Phase Two Master Park Plan? Seeing none. All right, well, then we'll move on to the construction impacts to Norman West Park.
Were we going to talk about some questions from the Alderman first before we got to that?
I think we didn't have any.
I have some slides for some questions we got by email.
Oh, I thought we were taking that up under the, under the construction impacts to.
We'll keep, we'll keep rolling. Okay. We had some questions that were forwarded to us by email from various members of the Board of Aldermen. And the first question we wanted to address was one that came from Alderman O'Neil about what might go into our new park. Just in summary, only the GRG connector is moving forward right now. And that includes the trail from Rogers Parkway to Deer Creek Greenway, the lake and amphitheater, the soccer field and the parking lot. So the future park elements are still to be determined. Part of Alderman O'Neil's email also asked some questions about a labyrinth, a food truck area, farmers market, community garden. And before we address these, I'd actually like to turn it back over to Alderman O'Neil just to give everybody an update about what a labyrinth is. I think she'll probably do it better justice than than I would. So I'd just like to turn that over to her right now. She could just give us a little definition about what a labyrinth is.
Certainly. This is a medieval construction and it fits in with today's mindfulness and the meditation areas that we're talking about. It's usually made of concrete or stone. Concrete would be better so that it could be in the flood area. And it's a very quiet meditative walk as you follow a path into the center and another path out. So if there are multiple people, you are not on the same path. You don't bump into each other. I saw one of these, I've seen several. But one was in Wyoming near the Playa, I think the Playa River. And it was down by the riverside and some of the churches seemed to be behind it, which made me think that perhaps some of our faith based people here in Brentwood in the surrounding area might be interested in doing this. It would, if it were made correctly out of concrete, it'd be impervious to the flood. So it would work in this area.
Thank you very much. So we looked at at some of those elements and we wanted to just kind of share our ideas in response to your questions about those. So we're primarily looking again at this area in red. So first off, potential labyrinth locations. We think we can probably accommodate on a labyrinth with this current design with very little modification in location one, which is shown right here. And I'll show you a detail of that in a minute. As far as the potential food truck and farmers market, we think those two could go in this location and I'll show some additional detail on that as well. Community garden's still kind of a head scratcher because there's, there's a lot to. A community garden sounds kind of simple, but they need to be fenced. And a lot of times they need to be close to roadway so people don't have to carry a lot of things. They usually have an outbuilding to store things. So unfortunately, right now, I don't know that we have an answer yet of where one could go in this park. We might kind of broaden our look. There might be some other areas in the project area that we could incorporate that. So we might have to get back to you on that one, Alderman O'Neil. But let's look at these other ones in some more detail. So the potential labyrinth site, if you remember this enlargement, as we came down from our tunnel, we have the subpath that kind of loops around. And it's amazingly, this guy Jeff next to me, he must have been reading your mind. It's set up perfect for a circle. So if in the future the city decides they want to go down the labyrinth road, I apologize for the pun, we might be able to put one in that location. With regard to the potential food truck and farmers market area, right now, in what we have in the current plans, we could allocate during those events, half of the parking lot in a configuration where we might put food trucks on either side of half of the lot. Maybe have some portable restrooms there because as you remember, we don't have that building in the project yet. And then have kind of a central table and seating area in this location. And this kind of a configuration might be able to work for both food truck and farmers market just to kind of test waters and and see how that might work. Long term, if you remember, this is the plan that had that pavilion, event lawn and the dog park over here. We might be able to utilize some of this kind of central promenade walkway when it's constructed to line up some food trucks there as well. We could even utilize this event lawn. That's what, one of the reasons it was actually designed is for, to put some things in there too. So I think kind of the, in summary, we've got a place for those activities if the, if we decide to kind of move forward with them. And and I don't think either one of those require any decisions today. With regard to labyrinth, we never heard anything about a labyrinth from the public in the two thousand fourteen master plan. It wasn't, didn't hit the survey. Therefore, it's not in the budget. If we want to go forward, the city could do a survey to see if it's important to the residents. And if it is a priority, we could revisit that when we look at the other projects. So does anybody have any questions about those items?
No, thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, the next series of questions that we got was from Alderman Leahy about a proposed alternate access route to the Executive Walk Apartments. And I believe the proposal was is that we enter eighty seven ten Manchester Road at the existing west entrance, extend that road south to Executive Walk Apartments and possibly farther south. The anticipated pros of this approach would be, it'd be easier to build, maintain and plow. Manchester access would avoid having cars turn onto Anna or cut through the society for the blind. It makes the acquisition of Brentwood Materials, Plastics and Three Dogs semi unnecessary. Accomplishes keeping the walk and bike trail separate from car access. And the alternative access proposal would be less than the purchase of the three properties above that we mentioned. So we looked at this. This is a diagram of what that concept entails. You can see in red that the access would be coming in through that property and then connect up to Executive Walk. This blue area is actually the water surface of the lake during normal conditions. The dashed line is the extents when it actually reaches capacity for its flood holding capacity. We looked at this in a little bit more detail and this is what it looked like when we actually laid a road into that. And now one of the things that this would require is is that the amphitheater would be removed. And the trail would have to be reconfigured and it would be essentially right next to that roadway. So some concerns that we had about this scheme, we looked at it from a budget standpoint and it looks like when you compare the price of the proposed Brazil Avenue extension that we currently have in the plan to the Executive Walk Access Plan, they're pretty close in price. The Executive Walk Access Road that we're showing here might be a little bit more expensive by twenty five thousand dollars. So it's pretty close. The concern started to really grow when we looked at trail safety. Great Rivers Greenway has a standard offset from the edge of their roadway at five feet. Right now, the trail, as we've kind of showed it in here next to the road, it does not meet that standard. Their minimum shoulder width is three feet and again, we don't meet that as well. And GRG says when you can't meet that, you have to separate it with a vehicular separation barrier or a jersey barrier when you can't provide that separation. So that's what this trail would require as well. One of the other issues that this, that this plan became apparent with this plan is because the pathway actually goes into this flood zone area. It means we'd have reduced capacity and we'd have to try and expand the lake to capture that lost capacity. And we don't have any room to do that. We can't expand the lake any farther on any side. Potentially, the only place we might be able to do that is in this location here. But the problem is MSD has this whole area laced with new sewer improvements. And so we really don't have any capacity to expand that. And I can speak firsthand, there is no ability for MSD to adjust any of these sewers. We tried very hard to do that and and it's, I, it's impossible. It really is. Some additional concerns were the impacts to some of the properties, specifically the eighty seven oh two property. And when I say eighty seven oh two, I mean, it's kind of a combo property with two or multiple addresses. So eighty seven oh two is, and on this side, and eighty seven ten is over here. So when we put this road in here, this property is going to lose about eighteen parking spaces. The access road will almost double the amount of required property from these guys. Right now, MODOT's going after them for some land to put a new Mary Avenue in here to service their parking lot. GRG needs a little bit of land also to do some work as part of the connector project in here. And then this project would require about eleven thousand square feet. So that takes a parcel from about one point nine acres to about one point six, which is almost, it's a little bit more than a quarter of its size would be reduced. One of the other issues that we noticed when putting this in here is that we at our narrowest, we have forty feet between the edge of the property line and the building. So the only way we could really get that in there is with a thirty foot wide right away for that roadway. And right now, the city has the minimum right of way that's typically required is forty feet. And it's more typical for when it's servicing an apartment to be sixty feet. So that's a little bit of a disconnect as well. Just in case you think I was bluffing about MSD sewers around here, this is what this thing looks like. And we've tried on multiple occasions just to get these guys to move some manholes two feet to get them away from our path and they just absolutely refused to do it. So unfortunately, we're we're kind of hemmed in there. If you look farther south at at this other option or what this alternate access option does, we've shown in gray the way the path would have to continue south. And this is just the pathway. So we're assuming that the road stops at Executive Walk. It would come and again, working with the assumption we were trying to save Three Dogs, Brentwood Plastics and Brentwood Materials, we would have to acquire some part of twenty nine twenty five Brazil Avenue. We'd have to acquire all of the coffee shop and we'd also have to acquire some of Brentwood Materials. So what this means, we'd also put a parking lot in because we can't, we need, do need to provide that parking for the park. We can't not have any parking in the park. So we'd have to have that parking lot serviced off Brazil Avenue. We'd have two additional street and driveway crossings, one at Brazil and the one across the driveway of Brentwood Materials. We were always trying to avoid that Brentwood Materials crossing because just the kind of trucks and and traffic that come through there really don't work well with trail users, especially younger trail users. This most likely will result in the elimination of the active player in the soccer field. It'll greatly reduce the event lawn and the comfort station area and it'll reduce the playground area and the water play area. It'll throw us into a property acquisition mode of including residential property. It's still going to require some partial acquisition of Brentwood Materials. And we're going to have to kind of get out of the right of way, some of the encroachment that Brentwood Materials is currently doing to the railroad. And we're worried about that, that as we're working with the railroad, they really want to get those guys off the right of way. And if they remain as they are today, that could become an issue when we negotiate with the railroad for some of those things. Finally, there'll be an additional increase in cost to the project because this entire area we were using to store about five feet of fill or or waste five feet of fill. So that's going to be a significant cost as well. One of the other things that this will have an impact to is the neighborhood because right now, under this current scheme, we feel that everybody would be accessing the parking lot through either Pendleton or Anna. So it'll funnel all the traffic through the neighborhood as opposed to the scheme that we're currently progressing the design with. It would not go through the neighborhood. It would route around Brazil. So some other concerns we have is that we already have a access road agreement negotiated with the Executive Walk owner. It's taken us ten months to work through with him. It's, you'd think it would be a pretty simple deal, but it's, it's just taking time. Through that process, we determined that there are some deed restrictions on the property. It's twenty seven sixty one and twenty eight oh five Mary Avenue in this general location here. That basically you can't use that land for anything except park related. And we're, we're worried that MSD might not approve that because we're essentially building a road for an apartment building, which is why that that land was actually taken out of the flood plain anyway. So we have concerns there as well. One of the other things is if we have to go back and redesign this, this scheme at this point, we're about three weeks away from bidding Phase One project. we're about three weeks away from bidding Phase One project and that's going to put us behind from a bid schedule standpoint as well. And finally, it's unknown whether MODOT will actually allow that that second roadway so close to the Mary Avenue roadway that we're going to propose or have as part of this new project. So in conclusion, I apologize that that was kind of windy, but we don't recommend the proposed alternative for the Executive Walk for the reasons listed in. It was a very compelling designed solution to work through for sure, but it and these reasons are the width doesn't meet the current city's minimum standard. MSD's not going to allow us to make any adjustments to their sewers in the area that this alternative is going to require, especially for the to modify that flood basin and I'll tell you that flood basin is job one if, and I think we've always known that we got to solve the flooding first and that basin is really a high priority item, it's got to work well, it's got to accommodate the volume. Trail safety and experience would be detrimental and compromised, we talked about that. The project really isn't going to do that much of a significant cost savings for the city. Some of the remaining properties will be detrimentally impacted. The future park amenities will be negatively impacted. And we feel the Brazil Avenue neighborhood will be impacted severely as well. And finally, we've got this agreement in place with Executive Walk that we've invested a lot of time and effort into as well. So with that, anybody have any questions about this?
Alderman Leahy.
You want me to stop sharing? Okay.
All right. Okay, couple of questions if I can Andy. I'm not opposed to where you're throwing the, the two comparisons to work with. You've thrown me a curve with the city has a forty foot access right of way. Where does that come into play? How does that come into play?
Well, they have a dedicated right of way because it's essentially going to be a street, not a drive, not a privately owned driveway.
Drive, okay, so that twenty-one foot current roadway that's there would have to be forty feet in access?
The roadway would have to be twenty-six, but you need space on the other side of.
So you're proposing bringing in the Executive Walk off Brazil, which is a sixteen foot roadway. And you're going to move your moving vans and hauls up and down that, I think it's a fifteen foot elevation difference between Brazil and the base of the parking lot that's there for Executive Walk. They don't come into a forty foot requirement when you put that roadway in?
That'll actually probably have, I don't know if that's going to be platted as a right of way or not, to be honest with you, because it's on, I'm not sure about that.
Well, because I'm confused, you're giving me a requirement that says this proposal doesn't work because of city requirements, but your requirement may end up running into the exact same problem with the sixteen foot roadway. Which is the smallest of all the three that we've dealt with.
I don't think our road at Brazil is sixteen feet wide.
Sixteen feet wide and you have parking on the east, on the west side of the street, which makes it even more tougher to bring a, any type of truck up and turn left or right, north or south, to get in and out of that street. That's why I looked at coming in a different way because I started with a twenty-one foot roadway that's there. You state that I lose the parking in that current roadway, yet that roadway is wider than the Van Mark way, which was only eighteen feet and they have their nineteen parking spaces connected to that roadway as we've currently had to work with and part of the thing was to keep those parking spaces in play. So if I can do that with a eighteen foot roadway, why can't I do it with a twenty-one foot roadway?
I'm still not following what you're getting at.
Okay, I believe we're having a meeting tomorrow to sit down and go buy through the plans and to take a look at these things so that we can address them because instead of trying to do it over electronics.
Could you unmute please Craig?
Craig, what I'm looking for, and I'm not trying to derail the project, I'm trying to figure out a way that will work mathematically with the size of the streets that we're playing with and the cost of properties that we're picking up and changing. I do understand your flood mitigation and your pond and everything. And the only way you could have resolved that is you have to make the pond deeper. And the minute we go deeper, the question becomes how does that affect what's down there also? So I haven't proposed any of that. Your Great River Greenways requirements for separation of a driveway and the trailway was a critical portion of making the park work so that we didn't have to crisscross. But I'm looking at the proposal that is coming at us may not functionally work for you because Brazil is only sixteen feet wide and I don't see how you make it work with a turn and a hillside in there. And that's where I'm always been questioning what we're doing. Now Craig, you and I spent two and a half hours a year ago going through this, trying to find it so that we at least understood what we were looking at and coordinate where we're back. But I'm now two years down the road and I grant you, we're sitting here with proposals and wanting to move forward and I don't want to derail it, but this has been in your ballpark for the two years to discuss and look at, to work with. So I'm surprised that it's just now coming back with here's what we don't like about it.
So, so just so I understand.
Yes, sir.
Your concern is where the new Brazil Avenue transitions to the existing Brazil Avenue?
No, where you're bringing Brazil to make your roadway to go into the Executive Walk parking lot.
Okay.
That's a sixteen foot wide roadway that you're coming off.
Okay.
Out of the neighborhood and you're going down fifteen feet in elevation to get to the parking spaces that are there.
Okay.
And I'm questioning if I can't get my fire truck to manage a turn on an eighteen foot roadway when we played with Mary Avenue, Van Mark way and coming off Dorothy, how are you going to make it work on a sixteen foot wide roadway? That was one of my first questions out there. The math doesn't work and I've got parking on the street. Now I guess you're going to ask the city, the city fathers to sit there and say, take off all parking off of Brazil Avenue. And just make it a no, no parking on either side of the street. The limit is, is it still only gives you a sixteen foot right roadway to turn a truck. I just can't see you doing it.
Okay, let me just stop you right there Alderman Leahy, just so we can try and get down to the point, the issue here that he's thinking. And Alderman Leahy raised a question about houses on one hand that our department had an objection to. There appear to be any objection from our fire department with what's being proposed, leaving Executive Walk Apartments out to Brazil. Is that fair characterization of the question that you have? But the concern that you have is how can we deal with the sixteen foot when?
The concern's correct, I have not spoken with the chief.
Well, and you don't need to talk to the chief, you shouldn't have to do that.
Thank you, sir.
My question is, have we had an opportunity to have our, our fire department weigh in on this? Look at this plan, see if that's an issue or is that something that we need to do at least to address Alderman Leahy's concerns?
I think we do need to have the fire department.
Okay, okay, well, we certainly can do that.
Yeah.
Alderman Leahy, what else, anything else?
The other half of my question, do at least make the potential proposal financially reasonable? When you and I talk about we're about twenty-five thousand dollars differential in cost, are we talking about the three property purchasing and relocation expenses being in that formula? And then bringing in, I think it's the perk property and the one property at Brazil that you'd have to adjust if I was going forward with mine, so all of those economics have been balanced out and we still come out with a twenty-five thousand dollar difference? Or no, those properties weren't included in the formulas?
They, those properties were included in the formulas, but it's not twenty-five thousand dollars. The twenty-five thousand dollars, twenty-five thousand dollars is just the cost of the roadway, that's all we were comparing.
So if I end up giving you a proposal where three properties do not have to be purchased, but two others have easement issues that would have to, but in my opinion, may come in a whole lot cheaper than the first three, does it make the second proposal a little bit more attractive because I am not spending beaucoup dollars?
The issue with that, as I talked about before, is the fact that we won't be able to utilize that site for earthwork, you know, or storage and that becomes the thing that adds more cost to that.
Yes, with a change like this, we'd have to have other things that would be formulated and worked in. But again, Craig, I'm working through all this and I'm trying to have done it a lot earlier and not get forced to this back end. I think there are some issues that literally have not been explored. That could be both cost savings for us and maybe physically find some solutions that may work better for the residents there and for the cost of the project. I'm surprised that we've pushed, kicked the can that far down the road without addressing it. Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you Alderman Leahy. And just for clarification, I'm looking at the Brazil Street right now and are you saying that it is sixteen feet from curb to curb?
East to, running a line east to west, yes, sir.
Okay. Alderman Leahy.
So I mean, as Alderman Leahy said, this is, this has been the plan for two years. Of anything in Brentwood bound, this is one of the clearer things that has been communicated that the plan is to go out to Brazil and this is the approach that's been taken. I feel like the Alderman has requested them to take a look at an alternate option. Their concerns have been raised of why it's not going to work. I think we need to stop spending time on this as we're finalizing the plan and proceed with the plan that we've had the entire time. If necessary, I'll make a motion for that.
Your Honor.
Thank you. Hold on a second Alderman Leahy, I want to make sure nobody has any other questions or comments before we get back to you. Alderman Leahy.
In response to Mr. Wegi's comments, please understand this was submitted over two years ago to navigate, to be looked at and considered. This is the first time we've brought it back here to actually have discussions on it. I'm sorry it's bad timing, but I did my homework two years ago to bring this forward before we got too deep in the weeds.
Alderman Plufka. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, you know, I got to say, after listening to this, the, after listening to Andy's presentation, which I thought was great, by the way, there are many more concerns other than financial that were raised with this alternative. They had to do with issues like safety, they had to do with issues having to do with the remnants of some of the properties that are there, that would continue to be there. And just for aesthetics alone, the idea that we would have a meditation area or a dog park or other pastoral settings within eyesight of Brentwood Materials and Brentwood Plastics, it seems like, you know, we're putting something totally out of place, right smack in the middle of an effort, a sixty acre effort at trying to create a green spaces, a space that we can, that we can use in a particular way. Leaving those buildings behind, leaving those businesses behind, in my opinion, is completely inconsistent with the entire notion behind Brentwood bound. Not to mention the other safety considerations not related to finances that were already brought up by Andy. In addition to that, this has been a plan that's been on the books for two years. And whether you make these arguments now or you made them two years ago, Alderman, we are still far down the road here in terms of where this project is. And I, for one, object to revisiting this question time and time again. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman Plufka. Do we have any other, I think right now, we don't have any, there's no need for an action at this point. So this is merely informational to bring us up to date on for where we are on things. So with that, thank you, unless somebody else has any other questions or comments and I don't see anybody with their hands up, we will move on. And I guess that's it on the Brentwood Bound portion of the City Administrators Report. Before we move on, I will just simply say when I saw these renderings that were shown to me, shown to everyone tonight by Andy Frankie, I was floored, I was floored, struck by the, by the amount of green that I saw in those renderings. And I agree with the intro, I think by Craig and by Andy, that these are truly spectacular drawings. And that's what I think everyone, all the elected officials and all the residents who have supported and been behind Brentwood Bound from day one, that's exactly one of the things that they were striving to see. You know, and again, keep in mind, this is just one segment of Brentwood Bound. Brentwood Bound is flood mitigation, it's Manchester Road improvements and it's the GRG. And when you look at those renderings, I told Bowle the other day, that thing is going to be spectacular. You see a sea of green surrounded by concrete and pavement where there once was concrete and pavement, that's going to be replaced with just a huge green space. And I'm envious of the residents of the eastern part of Ward Three and the residents of the southern part of Ward Two because they literally are just going to be steps from the jewel trail system in St. Louis County, that being the GRG. They will literally be able just to get on their bike and ride to that trail and then head south. And they won't have to deal with Manchester Road, they'll simply take the tunnel, go underneath it. Regardless of the time of day, it could be morning rush hour, evening rush hour and they'll just wave at all those cars as they ride their bikes and walk underneath Manchester Road. And they'll stop, they can stop right there at Norman West Park or they can continue to go south and stop anywhere along the GRG trail. We also are going to have a destination park that will be just a few hundred feet away from the people who live just north of Manchester Road. And again, I'm very envious of them for that reason. They are going to have a huge benefit to being in that portion. And it's well deserved because they have had to look at and deal with the flooding problems since the beginning of time. And I'm very excited for them that that's going to be alleviated and more importantly, it's going to be a tremendous improvement to the space down there. So with that, we'll move on to the next item under the City Administrator Board, which is the special use permit of the twenty-twenty Brentwood High School senior parade. Bowle, are you taking that?
Yes, I am, thank you Mayor Dimmitt. Earlier this evening, there was a celebration, graduation so to speak, for our twenty-twenty Brentwood High School graduates. I approved the special use permit in accordance with Ordinance forty-nine nineteen, which grants the City Administrator Emergency Measures Authority. And I'm sure you all joined me in congratulating our high school graduates this year under this auspicious occasion and what we've all had to live through. So bringing this notice to the board, I think I immediately shared this with you all last week. Following the notice in here that I must report this to the board within seventy-two hours, I did. So this is just additional information.
Thank you, Bowle. Excellent agenda, and yes, obviously, we congratulate those graduating seniors. I believe there were fifty-four of them this year and it's very unfortunate that this is how their graduation will be celebrated. But I heard somebody the other day saying, no one remembers their high school graduation. I guarantee you, those high school seniors are going to remember this graduation. So next on the item on the Brentwood Days update.
Right, so thank you. Right, so thank you, Mayor Dimmitt. We're also living through, um, COVID-19. And as such, um, we have Brentwood Days coming up in the month of September. Ordinarily, we would start planning that in March. Um, and there's a lot that goes into planning, um, soliciting for vendors, um, finding, um, vendors that want to sell arts and craft, and then those that want to sell food and drinks, and then tents and utilities and carnival rides. Um, and, you know, we have to deal with, uh, what we've been told by the CDC, National Institute of Health, World Health Organization, um, and our county executive, Dr. Sam Page, that, um, we're not done with this, uh, virus. Therefore, we don't know what is ahead in the months to come. So in, I guess, for, for our concern primarily it's safety and how do we, um, have social distancing with as many people as we tend to have at Brentwood Days? So we brought this to the attention of the Public Works Committee last week. And given safety concerns, there was a motion made by Alderman Wegi, seconded by Alderman Leahy, to cancel Brentwood Days and focus on an alternative, um, community activity and what staff will be doing, primarily Eric and his staff and, and others. So we have people in City Hall that help, we have, um, Public Works that help. We will do what is called a reverse parade. Um, we've seen a lot of that already in our town, similar to what police and fire did about a month ago. So we will be planning a reverse parade instead. Also, at the Public Works Committee meeting, um, Alderman Wegi had this out of the box idea where we would go ahead and pursue our music on the menu and stream that so that people can stay in their front yards and enjoy that music. So that's another idea that Eric and his staff and everyone that participates, um, in this will see that we try to carry that out. So that's the update on that.
Thank, thank you, Bowler. And the final thing under the City Administrator Report is the COVID-19 revenue and expenditure projection. We're not going to spend a whole lot of time on this unless the board really wants to. Essentially, just by quick background, at the last meeting, we had a detailed slide presentation looking at, um, what we thought the projected revenues are going to be for the remainder of the year, considering, um, County Executive Page's order. And, uh, what we reported to the board was that we really didn't know because we didn't have any of the numbers, um, from the date of the shutdown, which was March 22nd, 23rd, whatever that Monday was. But we said that by, hopefully by the next Board of Alderman meeting, which is tonight, we would have those numbers, and we do have those numbers. And those have been shared with you. And if you remember, the, um, uh, at the presentation, we've made a number of assumptions or staff made a number of assumptions and came up with a projection that we were going to look at a 45% decrease in sales tax revenue for four months. And, um, that's the background. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Karen so she can just give us a quick, uh, update on what the numbers are, what they show for the month of, really for the time period from March 22nd through about April 20th. Karen, you are on. Or maybe not. We might be having a tough difficulty with Karen. Eric, I can hear you, Karen. Shelley, you can give me a thumbs up if we're, if we're good to go with her or not.
He's coming in here and she will be down in a minute.
Okay, okay.
Sorry.
Okay, Karen.
My speaker, it was not working. Okay, so, uh, if you look at your, um, memo that I gave you, you will see that as we predicted 45% decrease, it was 32 for general, for the general fund, uh, not 45. Capital was down 25%, economic development down 13%, and, um, parks and rec down 23%. At the beginning of the, uh, the introduction into the, in the memo, it mentions that, I'm sorry, in the finance operation, it mentions that total sales for that time for the, for what's allotted to the city of Brentwood was down 13%. But that does not translate into the same thing into each of these funds because of TIPS and TDS and, um, pooling and, um, the state takes out their 1%. The one thing that I did highlight to, for you to note is that, uh, obviously 13% for economic development tax is not 45%. But from the previous month, the economic development tax had gone up. And, um, you know, it's not going to be that way going on. But I think that's part of the fact that people are starting to catch up from January in filing their, um, economic development tax for maybe the quarter or something. Um, with that, if you have any questions, I think you also got the information from, um, Andy Struckoff, which again relates to the 45% of foot traffic that he talked about in his survey he did. And then, then you just have a slide that we, the slides we went over the last time. So if you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Uh, Alderman Plufka has his hand up.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks, Karen, for this again. Um, I just had a couple of questions. The first is, the column to the farthest left lists the month of May, and that's, it clearly can't be the month of the May because we're in the month of May. So the, the collection that you're talking about is, is more accurately what the mayor just said, roughly March 22nd through April 20th, is that pretty accurate?
Yes, but again, May is the month that we got the money. We got the money about a week ago. So it's for the previous month, yes.
Okay.
So it would have been the next. Go ahead.
Right, so, so what this, what this reflects is the first full month, if you will, of, uh, sheltering at home and, uh, um, and all the restrictions that came down right in the middle to that third week of March, right?
It could. But there were.
Okay, but it's good.
But there were some businesses that reported their taxes, but not for the month of March. It was for February.
Right, so that, that was my next question. So some of what's contained in this information might represent, uh, collections that were made even prior to March 20th, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that's, that's a problem, or not a problem, but that's something you deal with kind of throughout the year.
That is correct.
The, the speed with which certain businesses might report various, uh, sales and then as a, as a part of that, their tax experience too.
Yes.
So if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, on average, we saw on average a decrease in revenue. We, we predicted one at about 45%. We actually experienced about a 25% drop if you average the different columns out proportionally. Would that be pretty accurate?
Are you just taking the percentage numbers? Are you doing this, the actual dollar numbers?
Well, I backed out the dollar numbers and then I tried to apportion them as a percentage of what they represented, being sales tax, capital sales tax, economic development tax, and the parks tax. And I tried to reconfigure and I came up with certainly more than 25% on average.
Right. You're talking about all four funds?
I am, across all four funds.
Yeah, yes.
Okay, all right. That's all the questions I had. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Do you have any other questions?
Uh, just a quick one. Uh, I, you know, I think this is a great format to present this. It was very clear and intuitive and you were able to kind of get the gist of it very quickly. So, you know, I think it would be awesome if we saw this every month. So, thank you.
Not a problem.
Yeah, we're, uh, we're going to do that again. At, you know, the next meeting will be the third week in June because we're in the summer schedule. And we only meet once a month. So a month from now, we will have all the numbers for the 100% shutdown. Because as of today, it ended, it, you know, the county did away with the essential, non-essential designation. So all the businesses, with the exception of gymnasiums, which generate zero sales tax revenue to begin with for the most part, are once again open but at a lower activity. So the good news is that hopefully 30 days from now, we are going to know, have a really good handle on the impact on the sales tax revenue. And the other nice thing is, like I said, the last meeting, staff did a fantastic job of putting together four different scenarios of cost containment. Uh, again, I think it's premature to look at to, to do anything. If you have questions about any of those cost containment scenarios, we can, we can discuss that. But, uh, we're, we're certainly not coming to the board tonight to ask that the board take, uh, any of those or to, um, uh, to entertain any of those scenarios. Because again, we just don't know yet where we're going to be. But we will have a far better picture 30 days from now. Uh, do we have any other, all, Alderman Lockmiller, are you raising your hand?
Yeah. So as far as what the departments have come up for their cost containment, those will stay in effect. Is that the minimum of what you're doing to?
Right now? Correct.
Okay.
Yes, we've been denying travel requests that have come through, um, tuition reimbursement, things like that have, because we're frozen. So we've, they're not spending on those things, that is correct.
No capital projects beyond what was done earlier.
They're all deferred.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Great. Uh, Karen, that's, that's terrific news. Um, as I said, you know, if you had told me I would be celebrating a 25% decrease in sales tax revenue, I would, someone would have to have my head examined. But, um, I think that speaks to the, to the, the world where we are right now and the fact that we are only suffering, we've only suffered a 25% decrease in sales tax revenue. That's something to be, um, believe it or not, thankful for because it could have been a lot worse.
Yes.
With that, we will move on to the, um, consent agenda. And we have one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine items. I'm not going to read them because they're very lengthy and they're all out there towards the public.
But I believe we had a question, uh, maybe somebody taking.
I have a question about one of the.
Thank you, Your Honor. I would like to request, I think I'm off mute, am I?
Yes.
Okay. I would like to request that item 7G be placed on a standalone. I have a conflict of interest and would like to be able to recuse myself from that discussion, but I can't do if it stays on the consent.
Okay, we will remove that.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Alderman Plufka.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question about, uh, item C within the consent agenda. And it's a question for Bowler. Bowler, I understand that through SLATE, we have coverage for general liability, workers' compensation, I believe, and also healthcare. All that's on the agenda now is approval of the healthcare increase. Will the, will the rates for the next year's SLATE coverage and membership for the other insurance that we purchase through them, will that come up separately?
Um, we tend not to bring that separately, um, and we won't have those information until June. We present that as part of the budget, however. If you want to see it separately, we'll bring it. So. Eventually, when they, when they submit it, we have a quick turnaround. So in order for the board to weigh in, we'll have to have a special ways and means committee for you to address that.
So I have, I have a number of questions with regard to our continued membership in SLATE, and it's not something I want to start tonight. But there, I'm hoping that there'll be an opportunity even at the committee level, um, as we get those numbers. Um, and I'll, I'll go to ways and means and present my concerns at the committee level. That sounds like that might be more appropriate than taking up board time, uh, with my concerns, at least at this stage. My other question having to do with item C, before I ask whether or not I might want to put it as a standalone thing. Um, I, I remember talking with you about specifically our healthcare coverage and the fact that their loss experience was so good that we were perhaps going to get some of our premium back in the last calendar year. And yet, instead of that, we're, we're asking to approve a, uh, an increase in next year's premiums. I, I wondered if you could speak to that.
We have received a, a check back, and I believe that was presented to Ways and Means earlier. Um, I'm happy to share that information with you. I don't have it at the, the tip of my tongue, but we, we have received a check back, yeah.
So, and just real quickly then, are any of the, the increases in the premiums, the 2% increase that's being proposed that we, that we approve here tonight, having to do with healthcare coverage, does any of that have to do with, um, SLATE's loss experience in other areas over the last couple of years, having to do with general liability specifically? Is this an effort by SLATE to, um, perhaps recoup some of that loss experience by raising premiums on an otherwise, um, pretty well-run and pretty profitable end of their business?
No, this increase is a direct result of the city's experience. Our true healthcare experience based on our members', um, health issues. So this has nothing to do with what you just said.
Okay, thanks. Okay, thank you, Alderman Leahy.
Oh, I just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to, am I on mute? I just wanted to point out that we will be taking up SLATE at the June 4th Ways and Means meeting. And we'll be doing a deep dive on that topic. And as well, we can take up the issues that Alderman Tice identified earlier.
Um, I also want to acknowledge Jason. Jason's been here from seven, so I think he should speak as well. So Jason, if there's anything you want to clarify or add to what I just said, please do so. Jason? Okay, he may have.
I think.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, he's coming.
Hold this computer as well. All right.
Sorry about that. Um, I wasn't on the actual call. Uh, no, I think Bowler pretty much handled everything the way that, uh, that I would have expected or two. The one concern that I had was that we always try to pass along the additional, uh, premium increase to our employees for those that, uh, participate with spouse, old children, family coverage. And that was more or less the intent of trying to get this through because I've got to communicate that to our employees in a timely fashion because this will take effect July 1st. And it also goes out to all of the members that are on our retirement plan. And those bills actually have to go out next week for, um, implementation for July 1st. Uh, Bowler just brought up the surplus amount. I believe it was, it was between $72,000 and $93,000. And the way that the surplus works for SLATE is it's based, once a year closes, then any surplus premium for the city's participants at that time that are still, uh, a part of, uh, SLATE, uh, get a representative portion handed back to them. So last year, we received somewhere in the ballpark, I can't remember it specifically, but it was between $72,000 and $93,000. $75,000.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda as amended? And then is that we are removing item G, the.
So moved.
Second.
Could I ask that Alderman Wegi resume his video transmission if he wished to go down the roll call?
All right, I forgot it was on my cell. Alderwoman Eble?
You gotta unmute.
I got it. Okay, Alderwoman Eble?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderwoman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderwoman Ty?
Yes.
Alderman Sim?
Yes.
And Alderman Wegi?
Yes, yes.
Motion passed.
Alderman Puska votes yes as well. I didn't get called on, but that's okay. All right. So the, the motion carries eight to zero, which brings up the last item under the, that's the warrant list for the 2020 expenditures from the 2018 Series Certificate for Participation. Alderman Leahy.
Your Honor, I will recuse myself from this vote because there is a item that reflects a conflict of interest with the three dog property.
Thank you. So the chair would entertain a motion then to approve the warrant list
So moved.
Participation. Motion made by Alderman Lockmiller, seconded by.
Alderman Tice.
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, can we get a roll call, please?
Alderman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Recused.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Ty?
Yes.
Alderman Puska?
Yes. Yes.
Alderman Sim?
Yes.
And Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Motion passes, seven, eight, one or two.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is Old Business Bill Number 6288. Can we get a, I think for a second read by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney?
Bill Number 6288, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri approving an access easement agreement with GWH LLC, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
Thank you. Chair would entertain a motion to perfect Bill Number 6288.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
There we go.
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Ty?
Yes.
Alderman Puska?
Yes.
Yes.
I, she, I'm a yes if she called my name.
Okay. And Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
So passes, it becomes ordinance number 4926.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, under New Business, Bill Number 6290. Can we get a first read?
Mean by title only, please, Mr. City Attorney.
Bill Number 6290, first reading and ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain real estate sale contract with Robert J. Becker and Naomi J. Becker for the purchase of a certain property at 2828 Breckenridge Industrial Court, approving a lease to Becker Contracting and Development Company Incorporated, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
Thank you. Bola, is Mark presenting on this or who is?
Yes, Mark is here. Mark?
Okay, Mark, if you could unmute.
Hi, good evening.
Good evening.
Before you tonight is a bill to approve a sale contract with Mr. and Mrs. Becker. It's similar to other deals we've done in the past with other property owners and on the project, including Larry West and some of our folks where we have done a lease back to them after the closing. In this case, we would lease back the property to their operating entity post-closing through, at the latest, the end of the year, which is consistent with our, our schedule for the project. So it, it authorizes the closing and the, and sale contract, the purchase of property and this lease back. The only wrinkle that is a kind of a wrinkle we learned about about 10 days ago was we learned that they had a third-party tenant in there. The third-party tenant is a very small tenant, occupies 500 square feet or maybe a little bit more than that. And we are also responsible for paying their relocation and providing other relocation assistance. Doug Marshall, who's a city's relocation consultant, has visited with them and the results of that are consistent with what's in your memo in terms of an estimate that the relocation expenses are likely to be in the $3,000 to $5,000 range for this tenant, although it could exceed that. In reality, he, he thinks the $3,000 to $5,000 range is the most likely outcome for their relocation.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Mark? Okay, we would like to have a second read on this. Can we get a motion for second reading?
So moved.
Second.
The motion by Alderman Sim, seconded by Alderman Wegi for a second reading.
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries eight to zero. Mr. City Attorney, can we get a second read of Bill 6290, please?
Bill Number 6290, second reading and consideration for adoption. An ordinance of the City of Brentwood, Missouri approving a certain real estate sale contract with Robert J. Becker and Naomi J. Becker for the purchase of a certain property at 2828 Breckenridge Industrial Court, approving a lease to Becker Contracting and Development Company Incorporated, authorizing certain other actions in connection therewith, providing for the effective date of this ordinance and containing a severability clause.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to perfect Bill 6290 into ordinance form.
Second.
We have a motion by Alderman Leahy to perfect Bill 6290 and it was seconded by Alderman Sim. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Ty?
Yes.
Alderman Puska?
Yes.
Alderman Sim?
Yes.
And Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Bill Number 6290 becomes ordinance number 4927.
Great, thank you. That brings us up to Item 10, which is citizen comment. So now is the time for these participants who are kind enough to hang on and we have one hand up ready and that is Jeff Gould. Jeff, if you would unmute, you have three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Appreciate the time tonight and I, and I thank you guys for really pulling the resources together to, to carry this virtual meeting. I think it's gone over very well. I know it's been a very long night. I did have a couple of quest, comments regarding the Norm West Park proposal that was shown tonight by Andy. First of all, extremely thorough presentation. I appreciate the fact that you've thoroughly explored and communicated the differences of, of the plans of, of the, of the different entrances to the apartment complex there. The question that I had is, is more about the parking spaces allotted for Norm West Park. And if you've ever been to a soccer game during that time on Norm West Soccer Field, parking, it overflows everywhere. And the question is, are we certain that we've allotted enough parking spaces considering that, that it's going to be a very beautiful park and it won't be only people coming and going to a soccer game that will be wanting to use that, that parking facility? My second comment is in relation to the Van Markway presentation. And what I didn't see is, is how does it affect the on-street parking currently for Dorothy residents? It seems to me that the current design would require at least limiting or removing of, of the on-street, street parking and that wasn't thoroughly covered. And then most of the concerns with moving the, the entrance to the south were regarding the grading, but did they take into consideration the, the property owner allowing them to do whatever they needed to, which would include re-grading the south end of their parking lot, like she suggested, grading the north end of the parking lot to lower the grades to, to, to get to that level if they were to be able to move it south? So those are my two, the overall comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. The next person, next speaker we have is Matt Bowman. Matt, if you would unmute.
Yes, can you hear me?
You have three minutes. Yep, I can hear you.
Great. I just had a couple of questions and for the presentation about the entrance of Dorothy Avenue, I realized she said that the grading was going to be like 2% less. They said the plan looked like it had been moved north, but from what I could see, it looked like the entrance was exactly in the same place. We still have a street, part of the street aimed directly at our home. And I still have not got an answer from anyone in the older man or the design firm as to how this is safe. I'm just curious how it is safe to have 200 cars a day aimed directly at our house? And solutions like rumble scripts and other things will not cut it. It gets rainy, it gets icy, and you have vehicles aimed at our house and no one has answered how this is safe. I'm also curious as to why the playground is more important than the safety of the residents. Now, I love that playground. My son grew up playing on that. I would hate to see it go. I do think it could be moved farther south, but the question is, is the playground more important than the safety of the residents? Because apparently it seems to be. And also, how is the playground now going to be safe when you're adding another road? So the playground will now be surrounded by four roads. And anyone with children though, they don't stay in the playground. They run after balls, they run after car, whatever. Is that going to be safe now adding another entrance, another road next to the playground? Which brings me back to my other point I had, is as why the Mary Plan is not being considered. Now, I know there were some traffic concerns at first, but we've shown that there were no traffic studies, so no one has any idea what the traffic would be if Mary would suffer more than any of the other streets. And back to the playground, again, I said you could move, you could remove and move the playground, expand Mary Avenue so those three residents keep their on-street parking. That would seem to solve a lot of problems. And I also heard a lot of talk about the cost when you were talking about things down in Brentwood, Brown. But it doesn't seem to be concerned that the Dorothy Plan, which is more unsafe, costs more. But that doesn't seem to be a concern. So I was just curious about that. So those are questions I have and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. I appreciate you, your, again, expressing your, your comments. The next speaker we have is Karen Smith.
Yes, thanks. Thank you. This is Karen Smith on Harrison and I appreciate the time that was taken today, to, to, tonight to thoroughly review the Brentwood Brown project and enjoyed seeing all of the beautiful renderings and it's very impressive. I also always want to speak up for the longtime people that have been in this community for years and have contributed immensely to building our community to be what it is. I'm always concerned that when we take on some of these new and exciting projects, the impact of that on some of our long-term residents that have been part of our community. And I kind of look at things probably differently than 99% of the people in Brentwood, but I'm always gonna, I mean, I'm gonna stand by my principles on this. I would prefer that we not, I mean, great to have a meditation park and it's great to have all of this green space, but I personally do not feel that we should be taking people's property away from them against their will if we can't negotiate something, you know, for those things. I just, I'm opposed to it. And I don't know if any of you have ever ridden some of the wonderful green river trails that exist currently in our community throughout the St. Louis area. There are, you, you, you ride through many, many, many different types of landscapes. You go through beautifully green landscape areas like what we're probably trying to put in Brentwood, but you also go by industry, you go by retail, you go by homes and it's, it's our urban fabric. It's part of our community. It's what we've been from, from day one. And you don't always necessarily have to, to, to try and hide it. There's some, there's some beauty to it. And so I just wish, you know, sometimes I think we, you know, look at beautiful renderings and think, wow, this is so great, without really thinking about the impact that that makes on other people's lives and, and their livelihoods. And I'd just like us to kind of keep that in mind as we try and think about ways in which, you know, both with the Van Markway as well as what we're talking about doing over at Brezoo, we can try and think creatively and, and try and take into the, take into mind the concerns that are being raised. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. I don't see any other hands raised, so we will end the public comment session, section of this meeting and move on to Item 11. We've got an item unclosed. We're gonna, I need a motion to go into close and pursuant to.
And adjourn the executive session from there and the regular. So moved.
Second.
Alderman Ebling?
Yes.
Alderman Leahy?
Yes.
Alderman Lockmiller?
Yes.
Alderman O'Neil?
Yes.
Alderman Ty?
Yes.
Alderman Puska?
Yes.
Yes.
Alderman Sim?
Yes.
And Alderman Wegi?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, everyone. We will reconvene and say, no more than five minutes. Thank you.